And I'll bring the this. I will bring this meeting of the Wellington, Connecticut Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And let's see, present are. Bob Shabbitt. Doug, what's your lesson? Roberts?
Roberts, yeah, yeah.
Doug Roberts. I'm mental block. Yes, Rebecca Sinofsky, I was thinking Beth for some reason, and it just couldn't get it out of my head. Thanks Rebecca. And Bill Benel is here. We will see Bill Benel in place of. Joe Hall, since Joe is not here. So that is the roll call and. Seating of alternates, applications for receipt, item C. Mike, you said we don't have anything coming in?
There are no applications for receipt.
Okay, item D, public hearing. I don't believe we have any public hearings today, do we?
No, no.
All right, we're moving right along here. Item E, new business informal discussion nineteen Cemetery Road Temporary Event.
So this one was a holdover from the last meeting. I heard from her today, and she has a work conflict, I think. So I will put this back on the agenda when she is. Able to attend.
Okay, terrific. So the next item under new business would be accessory dwelling unit regulations. And we have. Some materials from our package this evening.
Yeah, so. Just to kind of. Maybe some little bit of funkiness with how they got stapled together, but so maybe page three or four in your packet, but. So there's a cover memo, we've talked about this, we opted out of Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, which is the legislation that necessitates. To us to treat accessory dwelling units in a certain way. So while we're not subject to the mandate, we still. Have sort of the need to endeavor to go through our regulations. We've had a number of people come before the commission and also come into the office about. Asking about the current status. We've had some discussions, so I thought. Rather than start by modifying or trying to modify the regulations we have. It might be worthy to just look at neighbors. So you have two example regulations in front of you, both of which I have some familiarity with. One is Mansfield. And one is Tolland. So. There's, there's a lot in the Mansfield, right? I think that's good. There's a lot that is a little bit over complicated. And actually, we're working with them to try to reduce some of that. But one of the things that I think is. Similar between Wellington and Mansfield, which is why I included it is that we both have the potential risk of renters related to UConn. We can't regulate. That both. The old, the current regulations as we have them now, look at some familial tie between the renter and the owner of the property. And we can require the owner to live on site in one of the units. But. You, you have to allow the owner to be rented freely. So. One of the ways that the Mansfield regulation addresses this a little, in a, in a little bit more. A little more strictly is that they require, when they get the approval, that a deed restriction be filed on the land records. So that the owner has to live on the property. And so if that didn't happen and they wanted to sell or move in a situation where there was, you know. They wanted to lease the building and the ADU. It sort of protects that, and they've had some pretty good luck with it. I looked into the language and it is something that is enforceable. So I just wanted to put these in front of you. Tolland is similar, but doesn't have some of those more intense restrictions. Have had a fair bit of. Use of this and have seen, you know, not a substantial number, because I don't think anybody's seen substantial yet, but. I've seen a fair amount be constructed under this. They seem to work. But admittedly, Tom isn't as concerned about student rentals. So I just wanted to use this as a springboard for the conversation.
And what exactly is the concern with student rentals? Is there some detriment to neighborhoods if we have college kids renting ADUs?
I think the problem that we run into, John, was that. That the owner wasn't necessarily. Living in the. Accompanying dwelling. We had talked about this owner occupancy. Before, and that was the one big thing. And I think we also discussed briefly about having something in the deed. So that there's some tooth to. Hold people responsible. For. You know, being more responsible who they rent to.
But the owners occupying one of the places.
The owner is occupied.
So what difference does it make? That's John's question, right?
No.
So if you had a student.
UConn has, Mansfield had issues. They'll have eight people in a one-bedroom accessory unit, and it's just. And the parties get out of hand, spring weekend type stuff crops up. And I think that's where Mansfield's coming from. They're trying to limit. The off-campus. Ruh-ha-ha stuff with so much regulation.
Although Walter lived next to a situation where there were.
Yeah, the property owner wasn't.
The property owner wasn't on site. And it, everything was just out of control. I mean, it got to the point where I think the state police were there. More often than the neighborhood was just fed up with it. So I think that's why. I think that's why the conversation, that's one of the things Walter had brought up previous about. Owner, owner needs to be there.
Yeah, I, I fully agree that in the main dwelling unit, we should have, you know, the owner should be living there. But I, I just kind of don't understand the. You know. Certainly, we can't dictate who they can rent to. Right? But, but we can, we can dictate like maximum occupancy of that accessory dwelling unit. If it's a one-bedroom. ADU, we could limit the occupancy to two people, could we not?
I'm sure, I'm sure we can. You can limit the bedrooms and, yeah, you know. That is all within the realm of what. We can build into the reg. I think the, and we, we have these calls, we've received these calls in the past where someone has a residential home that has four bedrooms and they're renting it out to six or eight college kids. And it's far cheaper for them. They don't have the restrictions that they normally would if they lived on campus. And so if we allow accessory dwelling units, if I'm an owner and I own the property that I'm renting to college kids now, I can build. A one-bedroom accessory dwelling and rent it out to another two kids. And it, so I think that there were some concerns about that and the. Absent anything, how do you enforce and really make sure that the property owner is a party to. How the sites operated, for lack of a better word.
Right, and kind of forcing them to live there is going to give them a vested interest in making sure that their property isn't being abused and. That the neighbors aren't being abused.
Yeah, and another thing I think needs, what has to be addressed is that. These accessory dwelling units can help alleviate. Our lack of affordable housing. So, you know, it's to our advantage to regulate and if there is something that we can do with the deed. I, I think it's in the town and the community's best interest. When I say community, the neighbors. Of where these accessory building units are located.
Pretty sure that Mansfield requires that no more than five unrelated adults occupy one dwelling. So I mean, that's something we can do too, but that doesn't need so much applied to the ADUs, but could definitely apply to, you know, other houses, which. There's plenty of houses in Wellington that are rented, you know, solely for students.
Right.
Yeah. They still have the rental registration ordinance, that it, because ordinance is the only way for it to be retroactive. So based upon when you established your property as a rental, you can either be. Grandfathered in if you exceed or, yeah, you're held to the standard. I don't remember exactly what it is. But there's a, the occupancy, I think, now is established based upon veterans and with a, with a maximum not to exceed. And unless you're an owner, which are basically don't qualify. And then they look at parking, and because it's an ordinance, they can, they can change it tomorrow, and no matter where you fall, it applies where it's a reg, it doesn't. But I mean, they have had issues with property owners. Contemplating how rather than. Renting to someone with a lease and they pay monthly, coming up with some proportional share that someone actually is an owner for the period of time in which they live on the property, because then they would not be. Right, they're in a little different world market, but that's how they've been able to handle the register, the occupancy of dwelling. Through your ordinance.
I, I want to put in, I don't like in our current one, that there's no separate outside access for this extra dwelling. And I'd like that they have to have one in these others for safety reasons and stuff. I, I think that's something that when we go looking, looking forward, that they need to have their own separate entrance, and I think. Not through. The main house, because if something happens, heaven forbid, we don't have access to that unit and not have to go through.
Well, if it's like a, say, in law, a rental garage. If you think you have a separate access, it'd be at least a point of egress.
Right, right. I mean. Egresses.
Egress windows.
Egress accesses is important to me.
I guess. I'm not opposed to college. You've been saying kids, but most of the people in college are young adults, right? But if they're, they're helping out the property owner, let's say they're helping out and they. Somebody could be a nursing student or a nursing major or somebody in their graduate degree. I don't want the language. I don't think language belongs in there to say, oh, you're a UConn student, you can't, you can't rent this, you know?
No.
Yeah. I, I don't think we can do that. That's, that's not something that's within our purview.
Yeah.
I, I think something needs to be, when we're thinking, when we're getting down to brass tacks, we just need to be cognizant that we need to protect the. Adjacent. Property owners from some undue. Disturbances. And if we can, you know, have the. The owner, have owner of the main property having to live there, I think that. Goes a long way of helping the situation remain a great doable, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Mike, are we taking any action on this tonight, or is it really just discussion?
Yeah, this is just to kind of get the, the discussion started so we can figure out what direction we're headed.
Okay.
I like towns. There's enough meat there to be something, but not so much that. You can't do.
Yeah, I mean, I think that. To start, I mean, my thought would be and was. The structure of tolerance sort of to include that fail-safe that Mansfield has, the restriction, I think that gets us a. You know, a fair portion of the way with some of what we've talked about.
What thing it has on? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we were limiting the size. Of like a percentage. Of the actual structure, that is how big this accessory can be. So they're not too small or too big, you know, like is there. A happy number?
Well, so you can cap, you can most places say thirty percent, some say forty, or a thousand square feet, whichever is larger, whichever is smaller, whatever.
Well, there are some huge houses in town that a thousand square, my house is less than a thousand square feet. I wouldn't consider that an accessory unit to someone else's house.
Yeah, I mean, I think that functionally, when you look at a living room, a bathroom, a kitchen. Some storage space and a single bedroom, particularly with what we've seen so far with how these things are being constructed. A lot of them are coming in from like the barnyard. You know, the barnyard has sort of done a pivot and instead of doing the garages, so they naturally end up with sort of a second floor space. And getting them much less than eight hundred or nine hundred, it's really hard to do, and then. There's a fudge factor there, but what we, so I, I, you know, that eight hundred to a thousand square feet seems to be the sweet spot. We can't establish a minimum. That was one of the other things that kind of came out of the legislature during that session. So you can cap how big, but you can't tell them it has to be at least this, this much. They just have to stick to the building code. For ceilings and clearance and all that stuff. On last page, number nine, accessory dwelling units shall not be included. That's. Yeah, I think that if you. If you start to see some of that turnover, and yeah, that is a little bit hard to enforce, but it's just creating a stopgap between that and what short-term rentals like VRBO, Airbnb. Because those are typically a much shorter duration. So, yeah, it's. It would be a little bit tricky to enforce, but I suppose if you went there and you, you were able to ascertain who the occupant was, because after thirty days, they. They establish residency there, they're considered to be a tenant. So after thirty days, if there was a health code or building code issue in the town, posted the structure, we'd be obligated to relocate them. So if they were a tenant as of thirty days and they were not there as of ninety, and there was someone else there, and you know. It would be tricky, but I think it's just to make it clear. Airbnbs are not, you know, something that we want people building something off the back of their property to rent for. You know, we can.
Country carpenters in Hebron has a very nice little cabin that they build that has a living room, dining room, and a loft. That would be perfect on the back of something. Now are we thinking they have? So, and that has to still need. All the health code too, whenever they're building. So if their septic system currently would not. Take anything, they'd have to have a separate septic for that building.
Yeah, they still have to meet the same criteria for health. They still mean all the same building code criteria. So if they, if they had already increased, there's typically enough in, within the septic system to go up by a bedroom. There's usually enough capacity there, but if they had already done that, or there were some issues, then yeah, they would have to demonstrate that they had that additional capacity.
Because that town, the town one says cooking and. Bathing and bedroom, like it's everything.
Yes. Talking about the.
It's on the last page, I saw it. Or maybe it's the one before it.
No, self-contained.
Self-contained.
Yes, it shall include, because, yeah, cooking, sanitary, sleeping, so all the things that make it a dwelling. But if somebody had, you know, had a. A kitchen and what qualifies a bedroom and a living area and all those things above a garage, but didn't have a shower. It's not, it's, we wouldn't call it a dwelling unit. And we run into this frequently. People want to put a place for a microwave and a fridge and a barn, and they have a bathroom, but they don't shower. Or they have a big detached garage, they want to have, you know, man cave, or, so we would typically, if it's a dwelling unit, we want them to have access to everything. But if they're trying to sort of do something other than that, we make sure that they don't have, you know, one of those, those things on the list.
The, the second one that we're looking at here, section seventeen point six, is that Mansfield's?
That's Tolland. The first one is.
That's Tolland, okay. I'm good. So one of the things in this Tolland one, then general requirements, number one. At least one of the occupants of either dwelling unit shall be the owner of record of said dwellings or heir. So that basically means if I have college-age kids and I leave them in my house, I can throw a whole bunch of other college-age kids into my accessory dwelling unit?
The way that that is worded, yes, I would, I would. I would say so. You could do it that way.
That's, that's something we should seek to avoid, correct?
Right, I think that's the situation that had occurred, what Walter was talking about. That's why it got to a situation as it did. So, yeah, we want to avoid that, John.
Okay, so then within the Mansfield one, we have, do we have a better owner occupancy requirement here? I'm looking at number two under Mansfield?
Yes, yeah, that would be the language I would suggest we pull. From the Mansfield section, which requires the deed restriction.
Yeah, I, I think I'd be leaning towards Mansfield's.
And again, having, having the thing self-contained, John, that could help us with the affordable housing situation also.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Wouldn't take too many ADUs to. Make a big dent in our ten percent, right?
Oh, right. Well, it helps. Everyone helps.
Yes, yeah.
And I think we're more apt to get people. Leaning this way as opposed to someone coming in and building affordable housing. I don't think that's really going to happen.
Okay, so. Go ahead, Rebecca.
I just think the town would be more comfortable with ADUs. It's helping our affordable housing than. A whole affordable housing project coming in.
Right, right. All right, so Mike, we've got some good notes on this. What, what else do we need to discuss on it? Are we, are we good to go for now?
Yeah, I mean, we, I know we're missing a few people, so if we want to hold it over for the next meeting to then. Check in and come up with the consensus, I think the next step, which could be now or could be after the next meeting, would be, I, I could start pulling the pieces from Mansfield and Tolland and kind of. Put them all together in a mashup, so you could see if you like the way that all works together.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably good. Let's, let's have another discussion with the rest of the commissioners. And if you could put something together for our next meeting so that we could go over it and. See what we think. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Item three under new business, the outdoor dining regulations.
So also in the same vein, although with a little bit different of a. Twist, because you can't opt out of this one. The legislature said that you must allow outdoor dining accessory to a bona fide. Who serves establishment by right, which means you can't have a public hearing or require. A special permit that comes before the commission. You can't attach special conditions. You have to have a set of standards, do a review, and determine that it meets those criteria. You have some flexibility on the standards, and you have flexibility on whether or not they get reviewed by staff or they come to the commission for a review, but. Other than that, it's, it's pretty rigid. We. Discussed this at the last meeting, and my takeaways were, there were some concerns about how we would deal with noise, and there were some concerns with how we would address parking. So I. Sort of went through everything and have looked at a bunch of examples of these and also thought about what we have. And. The revisions to what was before you, the last time we discussed this, sort of as a Kickstarter, are shown in blue. So. Operationally, noise is an impossible thing to regulate. It is an impossible thing to measure. It is very subjective. And can be based upon so many different things that I. For life, may cannot think of a true measurable standard that we could attach to these to say that, that pertains to noise. So what I did was, I included the language under A, which says that you can't have any outdoor seating inside of rear yard setback. So that is intended to keep the seating areas as far away from. Property lines as possible. The next thing that I did was add the B, which is that the number of tables and seats shall not exceed fifty percent of the interior seating capacity. So that keeps us in a position where their outdoor area doesn't start to overshadow their inside service, and you don't end up with sort of outdoor. Parties or festivals or gatherings, or whatever you want to call it. The, the, the establishment still must continue to function predominantly as a bona fide brick and mortar restaurant. Third amendment is that the parking lot layout, which demonstrate, or a parking lot layout, which demonstrates that existing spaces account for not more than fifty percent of the parking spaces required. So, and this needs to be modified a little bit, but what I'm trying to get at here is. That the number of parking spaces that are ultimately going to be required by your patio or outdoor dining area do not exceed fifty percent. And that's because we're not going to allow your tables to exceed fifty percent and above. But I also want to very truly acknowledge that. We have had five operations of outdoor dining for the last three years, and we have had zero complaints, zero issues. With health, building, fire marshal, adjacent tenants, residents, et cetera, so. We are not in a position, in my estimation, where we have problems that we need to address. It's more trying to write a regulation, I think, that dovetails with the operations that we have. The other, the last thing I added is at the very bottom, number four, live entertainment amplified or not amplified music are one of the things that. Are not allowed as part of this, which speaks to the noise concern. The rest of it was what we kind of looked at previously, and I'll stop there.
Mike, when it says here, or, yeah, or, or the consumption of alcohol only, does that mean it like can't just be an outdoor bar where people would go and get, get drinks and not have food?
Right, so the, yeah, this, this caveat that was passed at the state level is for a food service, serving establishment, it is. So it's not to say that a bar or a rest or a tavern or a brewery couldn't also do this, but they would have to go through the normal approval process.
Ah, okay, okay, I see.
So if, if a restaurant. Has patio seating already that was in their original plan, this is beyond that. This is like Wellington Pizza One, where they set up that outdoor section in the front of their parking. Trying to.
Yeah, so this is not.
Court the monkey.
Yeah, this is, this is not going to change. This is not something different than, for example, Hilltop. So this is not giving them some other ability to do something else. They would be subject to that, and they actually did an expansion, I think, during COVID. Under the outdoor dining executive orders. Would be, you know, basically, I think, at their own risk. Because they put in patio pavers and a whole bunch of nontemporary things, but the understanding that at some point they would have to seek approval or effectively remove them. Would be understanding that at some point they would have to seek approval or effectively remove them. Um. But yeah, this doesn't give them anything separate above and beyond.
Well, I I don't think that they would have to remove the pavers and remove the patio, but they could just remove tables now. To make sure that they don't have more than fifty percent.
Yeah. If there are some coverage issues or depending on what they put in there, but they did it prior to. Any executive orders being legitimized, so they didn't know that they were gonna be allowed to do this through this. Through this legislation at the time. Um, but yes, there's some of that stuff likely could could just remain.
Okay, and Hilltop often does have somebody with like a an acoustic guitar and a microphone uh, on on the patio on weekends, I've seen that. Would that come under the uh, item four?
So I think that I'd have to look because half of their patio was existing and so if and when that came before the town. There was an understanding or an acknowledgement of that, and I would say it would be subject to that. If not. Then they would have to come back to the commission for that entertainment piece.
Isn't there an ordinance we have for one entertainment that makes that legal?
Uh, uh, there was some stuff about adult entertainment, yeah, but I don't, I don't know, something like uh, acoustics.
I thought that all was tied in.
There's a lot of references to ordinances that don't actually exist.
In our town?
Yes, that's just part of the complication process, like drive by ordinance, we don't have. Um, there's some other ordinances that we referenced and they don't exist and never have.
Or they might have existed in someone's head and just never got put down on paper.
Right, so I'm not saying that's just us, but I, um. Yeah, I.
We lost all the data then, too, right?
Um, we didn't lose stuff like that, you know, we lost some, some property scans and property file stuff. We didn't, we wouldn't have lost something like this, but um, I will, I'm gonna check now to see what we'll use here. Yeah, definitely, uh. So.
In that past.
We have an adult oriented businesses ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, adult oriented business ordinance, um. I don't see anything specific to just. All live entertainment. From what I'm looking at, nothing about amplified music, but that it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But this is part of the the process that we are about to get started on. Because we make references to things or we believe something to exist.
Is that around the same time, there were discussions about um. Uh, noise and it basically comes down to, you know, something technical that has to be. Put into place that makes it enforceable, so, you know, so many decibels of this, right, this, you know, distance from the. Um, event or whatever and they can't exceed this much, but you could go up there, Mike, with a sound year and it's.
Yeah.
Then, then the police will take action. If they don't have an ordinance, they're not, they're not gonna take any action.
And I know that that was evaluated right when I started here, there's a lot of concern with the TTV noise brought up by. Couple of residents, I know that was, the board of stockman did review it and determined. That enforcement of noise ordinance without a local police department was a very challenging.
Yeah.
Cause you've gotta have a certified meter, they've gotta have, it's gotta be calibrated, it's gotta be this, it's gotta be that. So that I know never happened, but I don't see anything about live entertainment.
I think, I'm just not to be critical, but number four, there is need some punctuation or something where it reads. Like alcohol dash only, comma maybe. And then maybe a comma between accessory used and as or no, come between as and. And depending on your reading, it's.
Yeah, as should not be.
Yeah.
And shower floor.
But I agree, there should be a comma after alcohol or some, is it a comma, colon, or it's it's some punctuational thing.
Alcohol with a dash only or something.
Yeah, I could do that.
Not an English major, but just.
Me either. Yeah, I can tweet that and I need to tweet uh, one C as well.
Yeah, something that.
It needs to stay a parking lot layout which demonstrates rather than the.
Something in my brain doesn't click and you see, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, it's it's, I went around and around, um. And. The parking lot layout or a parking lot layout which demonstrates that existing parking spaces.
Account is the wrong word.
Yeah.
Our, that existing parking spaces are sufficient. For not more than fifty percent of the. Hmm, no, parking spaces required is throwing me for a loop there.
Yeah, cause if you only require fifty percent of the parking space, it's only twenty-five percent of people. Like, there there there's something weird about the sentence, you're right. So you're trying to say, if I've got a hundred spots. Which can seat two hundred people, are you, they can't take. Space in the more than how many out of it? Without counting for those cars, like, I like, I guess that's where I'm confused.
They can only expand or or establish an outdoor dining area that generates a demand for. Not more than fifty percent of the total spaces. So the number of parking spaces they have on the property will will effectively set the maximum. Um, the maximum occupancy of their their outdoor dining area to fifty percent. Because if we are in a situation where we aren't looking at that, what would come up is what we talked about last time where. Someone could expand their outdoor dining, let's say they had a thirty foot, they have a beautiful backyard area and they have this massive patio. And everybody goes, but then people also go inside. And now we had either need them to expand parking for a temporary outdoor dining, which we don't want to do. Or there's gonna be potentially a parking issue. So what I, I wanna do is sort of limit. The number of existing spaces to fifty percent. Uh, based upon what's there, but because of the way the parking counts are written, I didn't wanna assume a set calculation. I wanted to keep it as, we're gonna review the parking regs, determine how much you need, and you can only. Account for half of that as a being existing. Because it's.
So if. If we were gonna run this down with some numbers, um, let's say that the restaurant can seat one hundred people. And they wanna put in a patio, so the patio seating can't be more than fifty percent of uh, their existing. Occupancy limit, right, of a hundred people. So fine, they had fifty more chairs uh, out on their patio. If they originally had space for one hundred people, then you, then they would have had to have had fifty parking spaces, assuming. Uh, two people come in each car. So what you're saying is if they expand to a patio that has another fifty seats, then they should have seventy-five parking spaces. Uh, to accommodate that additional, those additional seats, correct?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I'm trying to pull up the, trying to get to the section here.
Yeah, I guess that's where my.
So.
The sentence doesn't make sense, cause what John just says, they actually need to have more parking that exists than the building.
Well, maybe we should say something of. I'm sorry.
Try, I'm trying to give them the ability, we are going to effectively double count fifty percent of the parking that's on site with the understanding that. People don't sit in, they don't fill up a restaurant and fill up the outdoor dining, there's likely. Time, when they're sitting outside, there's less occupancy inside, so we're giving them the ability to double count.
Have you been to Bidwell Tavern? Okay, their their indoor and outdoor fills the whole.
Yeah, that's like this big, but, yeah.
It's totally different, but I I agree, I think you're gonna have run into the fact of. Well, I'd like to sit outside, well, that leaves an empty table inside, so I can sit more people inside too, who are comfortable sitting.
So if you're figuring two people per car.
Mm-hmm.
Would it? Would it, that means that you shouldn't require twenty-five percent more parking than they already have?
So our current regulation is one parking space for every three seats plus one space. For every two counter or bar seats. So it's not a, you don't have, it's it's based upon what they, what their ultimate configuration will be, not just two per. You have to allow additional capacity just because they decided that they wanna have alfresco. I mean, you could keep the capacity at the same number. There'll be a draw for them because people have a choice of sitting inside or outside, but it won't necessarily translate into more business. That keeps your parking, you know, uh, can your parking calculations adequate as they is as they already exist?
Yeah.
And, well, three. Number one, we have to establish what their floor plan is and what was approved. Which I think would be a little bit of a challenge, but I guess we could do it, I'm just not sure. I would have to look to see if if we if we could do that, uh, because it's again, outdoor dining as a right. And so I, I don't know if we could basically say we can have outdoor dining, but you're gonna have to remove seats inside. Um.
Not remove, but limit.
Well, then what's the difference? But you're just not gonna accept more people than what you're, yeah, there has to be a fire, a fire. Uh, regular per square footage, right? Well, so their occupancy is and what they rate is different than what we would do based upon a floor plan. And there's probably, I think we have it for this room, but it's probably way higher than anything we would, we would assume, but. The problem, what I may have talked about last time is it doesn't necessarily. Grow or you can't necessarily shrink it or reduce it exponentially or whatever the term would be in that. If you have a small restaurant that has ten seats and they wanna put out. Six seats, they're they're increasing their capacity by sixty percent. And on a small scale, that would likely not be an issue, but a large field would be, and so I don't know how. I don't know how to make that connection, um. I can certainly look into how we might, how we might get there if we wanted to.
Is the limit of the occupancy uh, related to the liability of the restaurant?
In what way?
On fire.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm wondering, and does their liability change because people are sitting outside the building? As opposed to inside?
I would think it would increase because you have the chance of those people getting hit by some driver who's not paying attention and driving right through the outdoor.
Or at least not, like, it wouldn't be less.
Yeah.
It would be the same as as if they were all inside.
I, yeah, the the differences on on the fire marshal level, they're gonna look at how many people can safely get out of the space. And if you have a building that has a lot of open area where people could congregate, the occupancy would reflect that even though they don't have tables. And if they remove tables or that all fluctuates, um.
I was thinking, the fact that they're outside doesn't guarantee that they have a clean exit from where they're being outside.
No, but as part of this review, building department and fire marshal would review and the egress from any outdoor area would be removed, for sure.
So what you're trying to prevent, trying to prevent is if the restaurant had a capacity of a hundred people inside the building. Right, and then they add a patio, you wouldn't want a hundred people inside and fifty people outside. That's what you're trying to prevent, right?
I'm.
No.
This doesn't prevent that.
He's just talking about parking spaces.
Right, what I'm, the only thing I'm saying is that I, I wrote this so that it would. It would scale with the restaurant rather than using firm numbers, but on the way that this is written. If someone has a hundred seat restaurant and they could, they could have an up to fifty seat patio, yes.
So if you have a, I'm trying to do the math here, so these are roughly, yeah, a hundred seat patio. Or a hundred seat restaurant, you roughly have at least thirty-five parking spaces, hopefully a few more. If you're saying three to a car, like the regulations say.
Three seats to a space.
Three, so hundreds, so thirty-five parking spaces, do we count our handicap? And I add more seating outside, if I don't keep my capacity the same. I can't have anymore because I don't have my parking, I only have thirty-five spots. So that.
Was there supposed to be an overage?
Uh, yeah, so even if you had forty spots, you can only, you're limited on how much patio actually you know, cause now you don't.
Based on parking space.
Yeah, parking spaces are gonna limit this regardless.
So you even, so you even have that. As a condition, do you just strike that?
You cannot, well, maybe your, your patio space cannot exceed the parking. Per the parking regulation, whatever, cars.
Yeah, yeah, I agree Rebecca, that's that's probably the better way to go.
Again, it's your parking capacity limits your your patio.
Well, we would never allow them to exceed, we would, we would never, no matter fifty percent or not, we would never say, well, you wanna add. You have twenty-five parking spaces and you wanna add a hundred and ten seats, we would never let them add. Patio space beyond what their parking required. We just are only gonna let them effectively double count half of them, but we would never let them exceed.
But I don't think you can, I I guess I'm confused with the double count because I wouldn't.
Because it, it's based upon. The understanding that they never, from what we've seen and all the discussions we've had with the people as we've done the permitting through COVID. They never seat the restaurant at full capacity when they have people sitting outside. So, so asking them, so holding them to a standard of this parking panel or patio. Basically means they need to have more parking than they need, or they're gonna be limited to what they can expand, because they're gonna have to. Tie up parking for spaces within the restaurant that they won't ever see. They also can't functionally serve that many people, adding fifty plus percent capacity to the restaurant, they don't have staff, nor do they have the kitchen to turn that kind of food around. Um, so we, we are allowing it to double count, but we're also allowing them, I think, or I'm suggesting that we allow them to double count. Because parking calculations are always too high as it is. One space per three seats plus two space, two counter or bar seats, one space for two counter or bar seats. We have, there's never, we have no parking issues that I have seen in any space, even even with the complete turnover and reallocation of belts. Way more parking than was needed. Um, so. Asking them to provide more parking when we don't know that there's already a parking problem. You're asking them to put significant amounts of money into the expansion of of a site, which may run into wetlands and setback. Coverage, et cetera.
Yeah, I just, I just that the the text language is just.
Yeah. And.
Joe Schmo off the street goes, ah, so I can.
So it with this parking thing, what would happen if the layout which demonstrates that existing parking. Is adequate for the, uh. Additional uh, outside seating.
But one owns. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Hope so.
Period, it should always, I I don't know what that gain, I don't know what you get gained by that statement.
Well, because based upon the calculation, I'm gonna look at their floor plan of their outdoor dining area and I'm gonna say.
Protocol numbers.
Hmm, yeah.
Increasing it, saying you can increase the outside by fifty percent of what you have inside.
Mm-hmm.
But you're still gonna be mandated by total parking.
Yes, yeah, wha- whatever parking is available on the site that you've been. Regulated to.
Mm-hmm.
That's all you got.
Cause if he has, if they, if they wanna expand, if we go by three per space and they wanna put in thirty. Seats, then we want them to have ten spaces. That, that's what the the parking cap will require, ten parking spaces. So they are going to have to demonstrate that they have twenty or more. Which means they're still gonna have fifty percent of the parking to facilitate seating in the restaurant. And they're still gonna have fifty percent for their outdoor dining area. Because otherwise, if if the ratios get closer or farther apart than that. Then I think we do have a situation where they have this massive outdoor area potentially and and if it's a seventy-five percent. And you do have, I don't know, something change or a large group come in and wanna sit inside, I think you now have more. That double counting could create a parking issue. I think at fifty percent, you're leaving half their parking for the interior of the restaurant, half their parking for. I think at fifty percent, you're leaving half their parking for the interior of the restaurant, half their parking for, for the outdoor dining space. Um, so they will effectively be capped in the outdoor dining area by one half of the total parking available. Talking rough, rough numbers. Though I could count Wellington Pizza and I could tell you, based upon the number of parking spaces, this is how many outdoor seats they feel allowed to have.
So the existing part parking lot layouts, spaces caps patio seating. Of fifty percent full capacity.
Yeah, so that's what I think I I would say, if if this makes any sense to you, and I'm happy to just walk out the door now if you think this is crazy, would be to change that. That that um. Capacity of the patio area shall be limited to fifty percent of the onsite parking or whatever, to get that generator.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, fifteen fifty equals a hundred. Amount of parking spaces that are there, that they've been uh regulated to.
Right.
So they. Doesn't allow them any. Any more capacity.
Right, and and the other piece of this, if you look, I'm asking this or suggesting that this go to seven dot ten, which would be temporary season or outdoor dining, shall be allowed as an accessory use. And so the other reason the fifty percent number came into play is that if it's more than fifty percent, then it starts to become the primary operation. And so by the we capping it at fifty. We then force the restaurant to still remain the main. Sort of.
Uh, or should it be less than fifty? So it it makes.
Math gets hard.
Forty-five, it's not that much harder.
True, that, yeah, we could, yeah, so I mean, there's there's no, there's, there's no doubt of where the main. Restaurant, what what is the main part of the restaurant?
Um, yes, but would it be helpful if I just pull an example? To show you a site, a parking area and a patio area, like if I pulled Hilltop and I said, okay, here's the site plan, here's how many parking spaces they have. Here's their outdoor dining area and try to, I don't know what information. We might have as far as seats, I'd have to look.
Okay, do we have a pre-COVID set for Hilltop and a burn set because they're there?
Yeah, I mean, we should, but it's the building department review that, that patio expansion, so we should have.
Cuz they had some patio pre-COVID, but now they.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, yeah. Um, it was. Yeah, part of that was, uh, we are gonna be having a wedding here and we need help for it, I think.
Uh, and and there's no, there's nobody in the restaurant, everybody's on.
Yeah, I.
I mean.
Yeah.
You know, except for some barflies in the bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, and when we had this discussion in Ashford Midway and they were trying to get their outdoor dining area. But they said, and we can't expand beyond this, we don't have the capacity to serve, we don't have the staff, we don't have the kitchen. I, these, the kitchens are in theory designed to facilitate food service for the restaurant. And if you start adding a sixty percent increase in capacity, they can't, they cannot handle it. And they still have to demonstrate to the health department that they can meet all those food temperatures, they can still do all of those things. So they can't just say, you know, we've got this little kitchen, we're gonna start cranking out two hundred fifty seats in this restaurant with outdoor chairs and tables. So all those things will still apply, but maybe I can pull a case study, um, just so that we can see what the numbers look like. Hilltop is a bit of an anomaly, not like the others, but I'll I'll see if I can pull something.
Or even Wellington Pizza too. Because that's a small enough place. What is their designated current parking and when during COVID, they just stack tables outside, yeah, they's limited inside, but how did that affect?
Yeah, let me see what I have the 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 most clear information for.
There are only four restaurants in town.
So outdoor dining right now, we have Wellington Pizza, Wellington Pizza, Hilltop.
I don't think Pizza Two doesn't do it.
Yeah, Pizza Two doesn't have outdoor.
They did.
Yeah, they had a couple.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, they just haven't done it recently, now did Flatpennies? They they had, when it was track nine, it had outdoor, there's a back porch.
Yeah, the patio is still there with tables.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't think they've used it yet.
So Wellington Pizza, Wellington Pizza, we have the uh Hilltop, the Eagle. Um, we have the juice. Hmm, yeah, they serve food, um, the there's a sort of a juice bar place that has two tables outside for people to sit. Um, so that's technically five, if Flatpennies did it beyond what was part of their any previous approvals, then that would be six. Um.
I'm surprised, didn't. I don't think they ever did, I think they just shut their restaurant down during COVID.
And we don't have anything, yeah, so five to six. Let me see if it works, let me play with some of this language and maybe pull an example and we can kind of see how the numbers shake and.
All right.
Think it'll be.
Yeah, that'd be good, that that'd be good, Mike, thanks.
I I guess think about two, if COVID comes again or something like it.
Right.
Sounds jigsaw.
And you have, it's like the Hilltop, it has the space. So if they wanted to increase their patio to have a hundred percent capacity of what they can seat inside, they wanna seat outside to maintain their business. And they've got the parking spaces to, you know.
Right.
To to um, you know, support that business, then who cares? Yeah, as long as they can fit the cars.
Right, yeah, doesn't matter, doesn't matter where they sit, inside or outside.
Yeah, where they don't.
Yeah, and and per the state, it hasn't for the last three years. There was no restrictions on capacity, the way that the state rolled out their executive orders, if the town did not give them approval or a reason why it could not be approved within. You remember, seven days, ten days, it was automatically approved. Had to go through staff immediately, here's what it is out the door, and it was alcohol, it was food, it was takeout, it was this. It could be in the right away, DOT right away, it could be in parking lots, parking space, it was free for all. Um.
It was an emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, have we beaten this one?
Yeah, it's dead.
Okay, um, moving on, item F, unfinished business, do we have unfinished business this evening, Mike?
We do not.
That makes that easy. Uh, item G, approval of minutes from June sixth, I did not see those in the um.
There, yeah, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to finish them.
We gave one to the next.
I'm working on.
Do we have to move people or is this like informal in fact or the next time we'll approve them?
Yeah, I think you can, you can table it for the next day, you're not taking any official action, you don't actually have a, even any minutes to to officially push off. So I will put that on the next agenda.
Okay. Item H, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Mike?
There isn't none.
And this is, this is pretty, this is pretty easy, item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Public participation this evening, anybody want to come forward and discuss anything, public participation? Going once. Going twice. Gone, let's move on. Item J, staff report and discussion. Uh, number one, zoning regulation codification.
So I just wanted to put this on here as an update, um, the board of selectmen awarded the um, the contract to general code, we did the bid. Um, so they awarded the contract uh last week, two weeks ago. Um, so we'll be getting that all squared away and get that started. Um, and as part of that, like I said, they'll go and bring a look at what ordinances we point to that don't actually exist. Um, but the reason why, you know, I think that there there are a bunch of these changes um that we are gonna wanna implement is that. The regulation document that I give them is ultimately what they will review and will we'll, we will work towards codification with, so. We don't really wanna hand them a regulation that has a whole bunch of amendments that we wanna change. So if we could get the outdoor dining regs in there, if we could get some A B A D U stuff, things that we said we were gonna adjust. Um, then that, you know, just less we have to do with the document once it's done. Um. So I have, um. One of the things that they will do, the first step is like an organizational analysis and they're gonna go through and write through their process to create section numbers, you know. This is, you know, subsection X with item A and then list one or Roman, Roman numeral I, they will. Perform an organizational analysis with the rest of the ordinances and everything else we have and basically restructure the code so that it's consistent throughout. Um, and we'll kind of get that as a first step. Um, so all the section numbers and stuff will change, but it should make it a little bit easier to use. And will reduce the number, the amount of white space that's on page, we have a lot of white space on the page right now, so we should shorten up our reg by a fair bit. Um, so that's just a um heads up that we're working on that, and then document scanning. So between department savings um and a board of finance transfer, which they approved. For us, me, the land use department, um, as of last week, we are now working with approximately forty-eight thousand dollars for document scanning. Um, we did a bid and the board of selectmen awarded the um. Bid to Rico, which is like a very large company that does, they service. Uh, a lot of copying equipment and provide those those um machines as well. Um. So they came in and did a review of everything, they did a test scan and um, I think we'll. We will be able to get through more, the original estimate was like a hundred and five thousand dollars to scan everything. So with the forty-seven, we're gonna be able to get through what it looks like more than forty-seven thousand dollars worth of stuff. So what's on the backend should be less. Um, so they're gonna box it all up, they will scan it, index it, provide it back to us. They will give us a hard backup, we can put in the vault for redundancy, so we'll be getting that project started. And then we'll make it available on the GIS so that everything is there and people can see it all. That's all I got.
Any questions from the commissioners?
These ordinances, you know, you're saying that, you know, they don't exist, but um, I guess if it helps. I remember attorney brands writing something, so his office would have had something and maybe he worked on it, we just never passed it, I don't know. But I know that we spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah. So you're talking specific to.
I thought the adult entertainment thing.
We we have adult entertainment.
Okay.
That's an ordinance.
All right.
Um.
And that didn't factor in any of the noise or live bands or anything like that?
So the adult entertainment would include all of that if that if it was for an adult entertainment establishment. Sexually oriented business or whatever you wanna call it, if it was just a restaurant that wanted to have.
I think that's where the, well, I think the Electric Blue started out as a poetry reading place and that's how they.
That's stretched.
That is a unique poetry.
I think that's, I think. I think that came up during the meetings. That's how they were able to basically create the business because they had a permit. The the live entertainment or adult or live entertainers.
So, um, we had, there was a section eleven point two three, which is called entertainment regulations for zones where outdoor entertainment, amplified entertainment is to be allowed. Which was effective as of twenty eighteen, and there's some general performance criteria, which includes. Not a ton, um, but it talks about. Um, some of the noise and it talks about, um. Times.
Okay, yeah, all right, so that's what I was.
That's in zoning regs.
Okay.
It's not, there's no ordinance, so twenty eighteen, I guess, would align with Mark.
Yeah.
Cuz then they did, I think, do a quick sort of a pivot into the noise regulation, uh, noise ordinance, which didn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
But there is some of that language in section eleven of our X.
Okay. This is a whole bug.
Is it? Yes, that's all. We have some, we have newer, we're gonna, they're gonna be revised, but we do have new ones.
Okay, is everybody all set with the, that last item?
I'm good.
Seems to me we're up to item K. Adjournment.
Yeah, so.
It is eight thirty-eight PM on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and this meeting of the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission is over.